Bring the September meeting of the Clean City Commission to order, please. May I have a roll call?
Chairman Russell.
I'm here.
Commissioner Bowman is excused. Commissioner Cummins.
Here.
Commissioner Ferry.
Here.
Commissioner Hollins.
Here.
Commissioner Van Hasselt.
Here.
Vice Chair Person Wayne is absent.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum, I'm sorry.
It's alright.
We have a quorum.
Would you all stand and join me in the pledge to our flag? I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, through God, invisible with liberty and justice for all. Has everybody had a chance to read the minutes for the regular meeting of July 19th, 2018?
Yes.
If so, are there any corrections or omissions? Entertain a motion to accept the minutes as printed?
Make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
I'll second that.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Consideration to the public. All those wishing to address the Clean City Commission need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration at a decision at a later time. We'll get that out yet. Does anybody want to address the Clean City Commission? Siri.
Well, my comment is on the, I think it's the next order of business, and that is the fair book at the Mojave County Fair this year. I just wanted to express my appreciation on behalf of the Transit Advisory Commission for providing outreach to the community on city services and especially the recycling efforts. There were a lot of materials given out, and I was there three days and noticed that with the little prodding, people were more than willing to discuss some of the efforts of the city to hold cleanups and recycle. So that also carried over into discussions about the transit program. And I know that we gave away all of our route maps, and the people that I talked to were probably going to use those maps. So thank you again for doing an outreach that includes not only the city of Kingman, but the entire Mojave County area.
Thank you for your participation. We're going to skip forward. Sidney is here to fill us in. Whoops, I just lost my whole thing here. There we go, thank you. That would be in old business, the recycling and beautification subcommittees, discussion and possible action regarding the formation of a recycling and/or beautification subcommittee.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, we've talked about this. This has been on the agenda and table at the last couple of meetings. I thought it might be worthwhile to have the city clerk here. I know you had some questions on how subcommittees work, and I tried to answer those to the best of my ability, but I thought maybe Sid might have a little bit more insight on that. So here to speak to the commission on subcommittees. I've also included in the packet the last year's open meeting law training slideshow.
Thank you, Commissioner, for having me this evening. So rather than rehashing all of our open meeting law unless you would like me to, I'll just focus specifically on subcommittees since that's what you're looking at this evening. So I know that there's a lot of confusion between where we talk about the commission as a whole and the quorum and forming a subcommittee, and there's a lot of confusion there. So just a reminder that the technical definition for a meeting is the gathering in person or through technological devices of a quorum of the members of a public body at which they discuss, propose, or take legal action, including deliberations by a quorum with respect to such action. That's when we're talking about the commission as a whole. Find my spot here. Where are my subcommittees? I'm so sorry.
Is it Word?
No, this isn't a PDF.
Oh.
Okay. Sorry, I think I have it tucked in here, so just bear with me. I'm really so sorry. Okay, so the public body, that's where. So a public body is defined as legislature, all boards and commissions of the state or any political subdivision, which the city of Kingman is a political subdivision, and all standing special or advisory committees or subcommittees of or appointed by a public body. So as a commission of the city of Kingman, you are a public body. So when you create a subcommittee, when you make a motion, you create a subcommittee, you have created another separate sub-entity of yourselves. And so the subcommittee does have to comply with all provisions of the open meeting law. So from that, I guess my question would be what specific questions do you have regarding forming your subcommittee and we can work with?
I guess if you guys don't mind, I'll speak to this just because I put it on the agenda a while back. And I'm not sure if that's, and I really appreciate your time, thank you. I'm not sure if it's the best way to go about it, but I know Wayne has some really exciting projects that he's been working on personally, and I've had some things that I would kind of like to work on so that we're doing more, you know, so we feel like we're doing more. But it's really difficult to get together like once a month, and you can't talk about it in between and then try to get anything done. So at the time, I was kind of wondering if maybe we should do like specifically recycling, and we kind of talked about like sort of more of a community outreach thing where it didn't specifically have to be about recycling, but maybe talked about like the other Rs, like reducing and reusing and being in a rural community and the importance of that, and maybe even having like an online sort of like a campaign type of thing where we could get people on board. And one example, if you don't mind, Wayne, if I talk about your just one. So he's got this kind of campaign that he's been doing on his own, and I would like to work with him on that, you know, or something like that where it encourages the community, even if you pick up just one bag of trash. Like individually, we can, you know, we can only do a little, but collectively, we can do a whole lot kind of a thing. So I guess I don't know if that should even be tied to the Clean City Commission or if it should just be some grassroots thing. Or, you know, like if the education, like if we did a little outreach, kind of like an education thing, should that just be a grassroots thing or should it be tied to the commission?
So it doesn't have to be, just from what you're describing. Now, I will caution you that there are some things within the open meeting law that you as commissioners just need to be cognizant of. And I think a lot of times, and I've heard this from other people as well, that sometimes people get a little scared by open meeting law, because I can be kicked off, I can be fined, I can be taken to court. Yes, there are those things as part of this, but I'll add the caveat that you as an individual can volunteer for anything, like if it's related to your work on the Clean City Commission, then you just need to be aware that there could be some open meeting law things. You just need to be aware of what those are and where that line is. But no, you as an individual, helping Wayne as an individual, you two can absolutely collaborate on that. If it's not a project that's been adopted by the commission as a whole, you guys aren't really discussing commission business, I mean, again, you two can talk about commission business, you just have to be aware that if each of you then goes and talks to two other people, you're splintering a quorum. So you just have to be aware of those little nuances and make sure that you just don't cross that line. And I try to say, please don't even approach that line, it makes my life a lot easier. But no, you as an individual can absolutely volunteer for Commissioner Hollins' organization or for his project, and that, again, as long as it hasn't been adopted by the commission as a project to be forward with, now if you guys decide that, hey, this is really something that should go to the entire commission, then absolutely get ahold of Rob and get it added on to your agenda so that the entire commission can talk about it, and then you guys can figure out the best way to go from there.
Okay.
And my thought would be also if it's an event, like you're saying, community involvement, then if we would all attend, we would need to have you all publicize that a quorum may be present.
Again, if it's not a commission event, because I mean, like the Andy Devine Days event is coming up, you guys can all attend the event. The state understands that we're a small community, chances are we're going to see each other. So they understand those nuances. We do ask that you always be aware of the appearance. And, you know, people seeing you out and about in public, if they see the entire commission just hanging out and doing what they think could maybe be related, you have to be aware of the appearance of it, and then that could lead to an open meeting law complaint. Not necessarily a violation, but it could lead to a complaint. So we just ask that you really be cognizant of those things and be aware of them, and understand where those lines are. But no, I mean, like the community cleanup last week, two weeks ago, if that had not been adopted by the Clean City Commission as something you all collectively wanted to work on and you just wanted to let that be a united ways thing, you guys can all go out and be a part of that event and be a part of that project. Just again, remember that if all of you are there one time, hanging out, talking to each other, or if somebody overhears you talking business, so please just don't talk business. Just don't violate it whether anybody hears you or not. But no, you guys can absolutely go out and participate in those kind of events. Just remember that you need to do it as you as an individual, not you as a commission member.
Would it be okay for, in these kind of things, in terms of getting the community involved, saying the Cactus Cleaners is doing this, or this is happening? And the Clean City promoting it, say through our Facebook, without it necessarily being the Clean City Project?
I think when you guys start promoting the event, and especially through your official Facebook page, I think that's something that really ends up involving the whole commission. And again, it could even just be the appearance, but having been through several open meeting law complaints, it's just not a road you really want to go down. So I caution you really stay away from that line as best you can. If you guys want to adopt it, is it the Cactus Cleaners? If you guys want to adopt that as something you would like to bring into the city, because I understand you have it going in Golden Valley right now, correct?
Yes.
So if you guys think that that's something that's worthwhile and that you need to bring into the city, absolutely, create the subcommittee, just be aware of the requirements with it. Create the subcommittee, figure out how you guys want to bring that into the city, and then you as a commission, figure out how you want to move it forward from there. Do you want to keep it with that subcommittee? Do you want to adopt it as a whole thing? Do you want to just partner with them? You guys have a lot of options on how to figure that out. But when it relates to open meeting law, you guys just need to be aware that really even having that intent could open you up to complaints and ultimately a violation if you don't stay far enough away from them.
So we can promote it without adopting it, sort of like giving out?
You as an individual can promote it. I would recommend not promoting it on the Clean City Commission Facebook page because at that point, you basically decided you as a commission are going to do things to help this group out. Putting something on your official Facebook page can't come from you as an individual commission member, that needs to come from the whole commission. So at that point, you guys have really given direction and discussed intent to partner with this group, and so then I would say you really need to be mindful of that.
Because it sounds kind of counterintuitive, at least to me, that if we as a commission want to promote cleanliness, it almost sounds like, well, we can talk about Scottsdale or Flagstaff, or this county's doing these recycling things, but we can't talk about ours.
Because you have no impact on them, you have impact here.
So it's like having the, we can promote recycling.
Because for example, you guys can't vote on something that the city of Flagstaff is doing, or that Coconino County is doing, or Prescott, or anybody else. You guys can't vote on that. You can say, hey, let's look at their example and maybe see what they're doing, but you can't vote on something that affects them. But when you're bringing something like this in and you guys are choosing to promote it and therefore choosing to be a part of it, that's where you guys start getting into some fuzzy territory, and we'd have to help you guys walk through that.
I'm guessing, so how would we protect ourselves against the open meeting law? If, say, he's hosting the event and all of us as individuals want to go? How do we, I mean, it's a cleaning event. Is there a way we could like contact someone and be like, all of us would like to go as individuals? Can we announce, hey, there's going to be commission members? How do we protect ourselves?
We can post that a quorum will be present to help protect you guys. And all that is is a courtesy posting, and actually, we have a courtesy posting that already covers this. But if you guys think it would really cause a big issue, then we can do a special posting for it and just announce that a quorum of the Clean City Commission may be present. But for you as individuals, I mean, if I'm understanding you right, it's a community cleanup, correct?
Right.
So then I would say, you know, obviously, you guys are all going to go get your marching orders in one place, and then I would say disperse, try and stay away from each other just so you don't have that appearance of an open meeting law violation. Because clearly, if you guys are out there, you know, kind of trash, getting down and dirty, you guys aren't hopefully discussing commission business while you're doing it. But I would say, you know, just work in separate groups to help break that up. That helps protect you guys from that appearance.
And I guess my question, sort of guessing your intent, Sarah. The intent of promoting and recycling and all of this in the area, how do we promote that without, safely with open meeting law, without it being necessarily our event? Because like if you say, well, we can talk about Scottsdale or Flagstaff, but we can't talk about it here, but the whole purpose is that we want to grow it here.
Yes.
So it seems counterintuitive to me.
So one option you guys have is to do it during your announcements here. Again, you as individuals can post it. The other thing is, we have a city Facebook page, we have a city PIO, and we can work with her on how to help us get that message out while keeping you as a commission out of it, if that makes sense.
I think too, if we all want to discuss it, we can put it on the agenda and discuss it, we just have to do it with everyone, right?
You have to do it with everyone. But again, I would recommend if you guys are going to be putting it on the agenda to discuss it, I'm guessing that's going to be to partner with this group and to help adopt it as part of what you guys are going to do. And so that's where you start getting into that territory where you really need to start looking at open meeting law and decide whether you guys want to do a subcommittee for this group or whether you want to do it as a commission as a whole. And I understand Commissioner Ferry's concerns that, you know, it's kind of hard to get some stuff done, like when we meet once a month, and that's assuming you guys get a quorum so you don't have to wait another month. All of our commissions run into that. You guys are not the first, you would not be the last.
Yeah.
So, I mean, again, if you guys want to form a subcommittee, it's not a big deal. A subcommittee is not a scary thing. It's not something, I don't think for what you guys are wanting to do, you don't have to do it that way. But, you know, if you guys want to do a subcommittee to help protect yourselves, there's nothing against that. There's nothing wrong with it. We just ask when you guys are going to be getting together and talking about it, you shoot a quick agenda to Rob. We have to post a minimum of 24 hours in advance. That means we need to have it preferably 48 hours in advance, because keep in mind, your staff is very busy. And, but the more in advance we can get, the better. We prefer five days, and we request five days for all of our commissions and even the council. So we understand sometimes, it just doesn't happen that way, but the more advanced notice you can give your staff, the better. But I would say, give them a minimum of 48 hours, at a very minimum. No, actually, I take that back, we need 72 hours to post. So you need to give them an extra 12 on top of that, and I apologize, it's a little different for commissions. You know, again, be cognizant of that. But it can be a quick agenda, just.
And have a recording secretary.
Yeah, somebody needs to take some quick minutes, but, I mean, it doesn't have to be super detailed. Just jot down what you guys talked about, keep some quick minutes, and then somebody, whoever's going to do that, if you would please type them up and just email them over to Donna, she can put it into our system and get them posted. It's not as hard of a process for her at that point. The city of Kingman does not provide staffing for subcommittees just because we don't have the staffing levels to be able to do it. But we can actually absolutely post that agenda for you and do those minutes. So if that's something you guys choose to do, absolutely go ahead and do it. I will work with Donna tomorrow on how we can get that rolling.
Okay. Did you want to go ahead and say something?
Yeah, I do. I think the main part that we were having a problem with understanding was, say if Sarah and I want to meet for lunch and talk about recycling or whatever, something that we were passionate about or whatever for this, we can discuss that as long as we don't call Jordan or somebody else and discuss that. But we could get our ideas together out there and then present them out, put them on the agenda, and then present it at the meeting without having to go through all the, rig them all, because it was like the understanding was, we couldn't even, if we went in the same restaurant, we had to sit in different rooms or something.
I mean, if the two of you want to get together for lunch, again, always be aware of the appearance. And we as a staff said, I think it was several years ago, and I don't know how many of you will remember it, but several years ago, the city council actually had an open meeting law complaint because four of them appeared at a chamber mixer one night. And all four of them were there, and people were like, hmm, we just saw the open meeting law presentation, they're not at all supposed to be here. And then three of them were talking with a member of the chamber board about a matter of city business. The other council member was within earshot. They in fact never actually heard anything, because we've been to those mixers, they're not exactly quiet. But it was still the appearance of the open meeting law violation. As soon as another, as soon as the other council member realized that there was a quorum there, they actually took the initiative to, but it was after people had already made that connection and realized that they thought there was an open meeting law violation going on. So the council actually had to fight through that, and it was quite a big investigation into that.
Well, something like that could have happened, say at the city manager thing where they were meeting all the candidates for that, and a bunch of us were there. That could have been easily.
But again, we do have a courtesy posting that covers the council and all of our commissions that we understand that a quorum may end up at community events. We just ask that you guys be cognizant of, one, the appearance of it, and two, be cognizant enough to stay away from each other so you don't look like you're talking about commission business. And again, don't like hop from commission member to commission member if you're staying away from each other. Because again, people see our presentation, they understand, you know, and a lot of times, it could just be the appearance. And you could be going and think about candidate. They don't understand that talking to each of your commission members is not you saying, hey, this item's on the next agenda and this is what. The general public does not see the difference. So just be aware of the appearance.
I think that takes care of at least part of the subcommittee things. Like say if we can get together, discuss whatever we was going to do, and then bring it to the meeting.
We have commission members, we have board members, we even have council members who are friends outside of the city. And so, and I hear the complaints a lot, especially with the council, because they are front and center and they're in the spotlight. We get a lot of complaints from council members that saw Mr. Loonfelter and Mr. Waite talking, and I'll throw them under the bus and they can yell at me later. But I saw them talking after me. Or I saw Mr. Waite and Miss Staley talking. Their kids play soccer together, I don't know. But I mean, it is that sensitive of an issue that they even have to be aware, because their kids really do play soccer together. They have to be aware on Soccer Saturday, hey, we need to avoid each other. And so just, it is a sensitive issue, but we, so we ask that you guys be cognizant of that. But at the same time, it's not quite as scary as we make it. We make it scary on purpose because we want you guys to avoid those complaints.
Yeah.
But, yeah, you can get together with Sarah and, you know, if you guys happen to talk about soccer, again, don't go to your other commission members.
Exactly.
But with a subcommittee, when you form by motion. Now, again, if you guys want to form a subcommittee, it's not a bad thing. It protects you guys, it gives you guys that opportunity. And, you know, you and Commissioner Cummins and Commissioner Ferry want to form a subcommittee, and we say, okay, we're going to have a lunch meeting, and we're going to talk about it, and for a lot of reasons, Jordan can't make it, still just those notes, it doesn't hurt you, it protects you. And it doesn't hurt the mission to be able to do it. And that's where it might help with you guys wanting to do promotion for those events, and really for any others, any other projects you guys may want to partner with. But that would help with that promotion, because you as a subcommittee then would report back to a commission as a whole, and that's where the commission as a whole can say, hey, let's get that next cleanup on Facebook. And staff has the ability to do it. It's just where we get into some of those nuances that we want to walk you guys through. It's entirely possible to do, we just want to make sure you guys do it the right way and you.
And so if I understand what you're saying, if we're not directly partnering, like if, say with the United Way Cleanup, then we would need to ask that it be posted on the city Facebook?
I think the city Facebook is probably going to be the safest bet. I'm not saying it wouldn't be possible to do it on the Clean City one, but again, we have to kind of step our way through that process because at that point, you guys have agreed to at least do something with this group. And that's where I think you would kind of run into some issues with all of you volunteering to be a part of that group. I think that's where we can get into some fuzzier areas. Again, it's not, I'm not saying it's impossible, I'm saying that it is going to be a little more difficult. And really, I, just from what I'm hearing from this discussion, I really think that forming a subcommittee is a safe way to go. It protects the entire commission, it allows you to report back. Again, all of you can participate in a cleanup, there's nothing preventing you from doing that just because you're not on the subcommittee. But, you know, if you form the subcommittee and you guys report back as the subcommittee and as liaisons to that group, that allows the commission as a whole to be a little more powerful and to do a little bit more to promote that. So if this is something you guys, and it sounds like four of you at least are really, and not saying you're not, Mr. Russell.
He's our leader, he.
The quiet one. But I mean, you know, with, it sounds like you guys being this passionate about it, I really think that that would be a safe way for you to go. And again, the minutes don't have to be super detailed, the agenda doesn't have to be super lengthy. You're a subcommittee, you can't, you don't have the power to do anything on your own outside of the commission anyway, you're just having a discussion. And then you guys report back to the commission as a whole and say, okay, you know what? Let's get that up on Facebook, let's really promote this and see what we can do. Or if down the line, you guys say, you know, I think they're doing okay on their own, let's drop the subcommittee if Ms. Ferry wants to continue volunteering with it, you can. But, you know, they're good on their own, they're rolling, let's focus on some other things and drop the sub or agenda. You can, but this gives you the option to explore that a little more. So I really think that would be the safest way for you to go.
And then also as individuals with our own Facebook, there's nothing preventing us from then saying, when the event is shared on the city Facebook, that we share it to our own friends.
Correct.
And networks and whatever.
And with Facebook, there are some nuances in the open meeting law presentation that we will be updating, they just went through, or just took effect in August. Just be careful, if you guys are all friends on Facebook, be aware of how that appears. They've really tightened open meeting law specifically for social media. So be aware of how that appears, and then also please just don't comment on each other's stuff. Don't, I'd prefer you don't comment on the official page one because that's where you guys can get into some discussions. And even if you're not talking to each other, the fact that you can see each other's comments on there is where you're going to get into an open. Now again, we're not the thought police, the state's not the thought police. There's nothing saying you guys can't read other people's comments, and we would never know. But it's when you start having those discussions on Facebook, the state's really tightening down on that. They're really looking at councils, but soon after that, they're really going to be looking at our commissions too. And they really just tighten that down, and the state is hot after it. So I really, please. the state is hot after, so I really, please, don't avoid, uh, any conversations on social media. But no, you as an individual can share whatever you would like to on your personal Facebook page, and that's the City of Kingman Facebook page, fire department, police department, whatever you want to do, you can share it. But, just, again, we always caution, please remember you're doing it as an individual, not as a member of the Clean City Commission, because you as an individual, outside of the commission, powerless to say anything about the commission. Does that make sense?
I think that makes it really clear, and honestly, I think that we can take it off of the agenda, because I think that Wayne and I, just the two of us, can kind of talk about what, really what, is there something that we'd like to do and bring to the Clean City Commission? You know, not business, that's Clean City Commission business, but just kind of what we have, some ideas that we have.
Yeah, and so, again, just be aware that the definition, again, of course, scroll up, um, the definition is, um, meeting to, uh, discuss or propose a recommendation. So if the two of you have recommendations you want to bring to the commission, really, I think it's best if you just go ahead and put them on the agenda, and I don't want to, I don't want those to have to get mad at me, but I'd rather you guys have those discussions in a meeting, and you say, hey, this is my idea, this is what I'd like to do, and again, it's protecting you as a commission member, especially since you voiced those things.
Yeah.
Now, it's kind of out there for the public, and they're going, wait a minute, those two are going to be talking, who else are they going to be talking to?
Yeah.
And so, you've already kind of planted those seeds, so, again, a lot of it can just be appearance, and even if you don't have the ultimate violation, you can get yourself into a complaint, really clear that way.
I think it's more of clarifying, at this point, it's not city, it's not city business or anything like that, you know, so it's clarifying.
The bill can absolutely volunteer.
Is this something that could even, would even, you know, is this even a thing, you know?
And another option, because you guys have it agendized tonight, the rest of your commission, is this something you guys really want to look at doing? If so, let's form the subcommittee and see what we can do, and then you guys could meet and come up with a recommendation that the rest of the commission's like, yeah, I think we're better before, but Sarah, just, Sarah just volunteering with it, and we're going to leave it alone. But because you've put that on the agenda, you have discussed it several times, I think you really owe it to the public to see that through, and to have that good, solid discussion as a whole commission.
Okay.
I think that would really be a good, safe way for you to go, and then, again, if the entire commission says, you know, I think, you know, you just want to volunteer, um, you do your thing, if you guys, if it gets to a point where you think it should come back, bring it back, and we ask that you be cognizant enough of that, to go ahead and bring that back at that time, because, I mean, the City of Kingman wants all of our commissions to be successful, and the Clean City Commission especially.
Yeah.
You, we want you guys to have that good success, we just want to make sure you're doing it the right way within the commission.
Okay, I think that's, I think that's understandable.
And so, again, I would say, just for tonight, if you guys want to go ahead and have that discussion on the subcommittee, or subcommittees, um, you know, go ahead, and if the commission as a whole says, yeah, and says, Sarah, would you mind being on this subcommittee, and just kind of helping us see this through, and see if we can get a solid recommendation, you guys can have a one-meeting subcommittee, away with it, if you bring it back, and the commission says, yeah, you've laid out a good plan for us to let, let it go on its own, but I think you really owe it to the public to have that good, or your discussion as a full commission at this point.
Okay, so, I guess, some of the things that have kind of changed a little was that we were really talking about possibly having the curbside go citywide, and so, part of our discussion was really looking at the education part of it, that was going to be really huge, had we made this big change. So, I'm not really sure, at this point, really, I mean, it doesn't change the fact that we need to continue to have this conversation, you know, and even, honestly, maybe even more so, because we, you know, people need to, I mean, it, it does take more effort to recycle, and people understanding, and, and not even now understanding the situation with recycling, and how really difficult that is, and being in a rural community, like, and I've said this a lot, but just the need to reduce the amount of, I think, a lot of times, when we have a program like recycling, people kind of, it's an easy pat on the back, like, oh, I'm recycling, I can get all the plastic bottles of water, because I recycle, but now we've really learned that, well, recycling is not that easy, you know, right now, so, I was thinking, is there some way that we can start having a conversation about reducing, and, you know, it's, I mean, that's the thing, is this why I don't want to waste everyone's time, because I really feel like I need to get a little more organized before I...
But that's where, absolutely, you as an individual commissioner, do your homework outside of this, absolutely, and we encourage all of our commission members and all of our council members to do that research outside of here, and if you have questions for Eddie or for Rob, give them a call, shoot them an email, like, you know, I think it's probably generally best for public works, just because they're so strong.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, shoot them an email and say, hey, I've been doing some research, I found this education program that they're doing in Biscuit or wherever, and, but, you know, I think we can do some tweaks here, tweaks there, and then give them some ideas on how to help implement, because Eddie's shop is a really small shop, you know, he only has so many hours a day, he only has so many guys to go around, but especially now having our new PIO, i-it might simply be a really good, well-thought-out video promoting that, but if you have those ideas, absolutely, you know, get ahold of Eddie, get ahold of Rob, hash those ideas out, and ask them questions, and I think that's where we as staff will sometimes even get pressure with the council going, hey, just ask the question, we don't know, you have a question until you ask it.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, absolutely, use your staff liaisons and say, hey, I've got this idea, can, can we set up a meeting and hash this out, and then you might come out of it with, you know, really great piece to bring back to the commission as a whole, or you might come out of that meeting going, okay, I think we need to give this some more thought, I'm going to go back and do some more research. You as an individual commission member can do that, all you want.
Yeah.
Um, just, again, please remember their schedules, um, but no, absolutely, you guys can do that without having to form a subcommittee, and, but, you know, remember, a lot of these things, your staff is already working on, if you can add to that, if you can help enhance that, and help, um, maybe take some of that burden off, you know, understanding that it's not the only thing that Eddie and Rob work on every day.
Yeah.
Absolutely, that's why we have commissions, but, just, you know, remember that, and then don't go to Wayne and Jordan and say, hey, this is what I'm thinking, and start having those discussions, because that's where, because you're talking about something you're ultimately going to bring back to the commission and make a recommendation on.
Yeah.
So just remember that it is, even though it hasn't been fully adopted as commission business, it is something that, that's your intent to do, and that's where you can start...
So if we decide, okay, maybe this really isn't something that the city should take on, or maybe it's not a city responsibility, and we just decide to go grassroots, you know, um, then, do we need to just say at the meeting, this is something that we've decided we're not going to do, and then just go on our way?
I would actually, yeah, make a...
Statement?
Motion to postpone indefinitely.
Okay.
That would be the proper motion at that point for Robert's, um, or, um, yeah, I think a motion to postpone would be your best bet at that point.
Okay.
Um, and then, you know, again, if it gets down the road and it morphs into something else that you think should come back, you as a commission member, we just ask that you be cognizant enough of that, and say, hey, you know, I think this is maybe ready for the commission to take on, let's talk about this again.
Okay.
Because, I mean, a five-minute discussion to say, do you want to look at this again? Do we want to revisit this? Not a big deal.
Okay. Uh, if, if, should we adopt this, uh, committee, uh, recycling and sub, uh, beautification, and we have a, a commission, or a committee of two, would it be best for them to, like, say, set a date every month before, uh, the Clean City Commission, where they can discuss things at their committee, and then bring them what they have discussed and figured out to the commission, put on the agenda, and do a report on, on that particular item?
Yeah, I think that would be a really easy way to go about it, and it helps the public know what's going on, that you're going to have that subcommittee meeting at a set time, um, but again, just be aware that, just because you have that set time, don't carry on a conversation out here in other meetings, be aware of that, that those are still meetings.
We could have it posted, so in the event that another commissioner wants to show up and discuss, bring to their attention something that they have found out, it would be...
So, that, that's where we start getting into another issue, um, so if you have a subcommittee of two, and you officially appoint, for example, Wayne and Sarah, to that subcommittee, and Mary Ann says, you know, I know that meeting's coming up, I really think I'm going to go, I'm nervous, then I found out, that's where you start getting into an issue, because they are the official subcommittee, and now you've added a third, so I think the best place to do that would be during that subcommittee report back, for Mary Ann to bring it at that point, and say, hey, I found some other information that I'd really like to give to the subcommittee, can I join that, and then officially adopt her in? She can leave the subcommittee later, but I think that's going to be your safest bet, is to still run everything through the commission as a whole.
Because otherwise, we end up having suddenly a quorum of the full commission attending the subcommittee.
You, you could, um...
But we couldn't, we couldn't vote or make any decision.
Right, and at that point, for sure, one of you would need to, but, a-again, if you guys are going, if you're going to listen, then what's the plan of having a subcommittee? Why not make it a regular agenda item?
Right.
That's why you form a subcommittee, for them to report back.
Right.
So I, I would recommend, as commission members, you just put your trust in them, that they would do what the subcommittee needs to do, and report that back to the whole.
And if we have this beautification commis- committee, uh, in order to make that work, we would probably have to have a bank of, of volunteers to be able to call upon, to get anything done that, that we decide we wanted to do, and those people would want to come to the beautification committee meetings and be part of it.
And so, beautification, this is kind of almost sounding like the sandbox, maybe?
It is kind of like the sandbox, yeah.
Okay.
So, those people are going to talk to other people, and those people are going to talk to other people.
And so, again, that's where we kind of run into an issue, and Rob can actually personally attest to this, so, uh, the city council actually created, uh, another commission, but it's comprised mostly of staff from the city and county. They did it because they really specifically wanted this commission, but how they structured it, it's a little outside of what staff does, because Bob and I have a staff meeting with the rest of the senior management team, we don't have to post an agenda for that, it's not created by the council, anything like that, so we don't have to do agendas or minutes for it. But this, it's a little different, because they actually, the council actually created this, and said, staff, you go do this committee, or this commission, and so now, that staff committee has to post agendas, they have to keep minutes for all of their meetings, and so it's added another layer onto what they were doing. They can't just say, hey, let's get together next Wednesday at 1:00, they have to actually post an agenda, and they have to follow it, if something else comes up, next agenda. So, be aware that it can create a life of its own, and it becomes its own monster, and, and I'm not saying that the committee that the council created is bad, it's a really great, great reason, but it did add another level, and unfortunately, that level was a level of complication, so you need to be aware of the good that these committees can do, as well as the law of unintended consequences that you can throw upon a committee.
And that's the Arts Commission?
Uh, no, this was the Water Sustainability Commission.
Oh, okay.
And so normally, that's something that Rob and our city engineer would talk to their counterparts at the county on, but the, the council wanted something more formalized, and so with that, it just added another layer that staff isn't used to doing outside of the council or commission process, and so it's something that, in our day-to-day dealings, we don't have to do if we want to talk to our counterpart at the county. Now, for those specific projects, they have to wait until that committee meeting. So it just, it adds a layer that you guys need to be aware of with that.
There is a, there's a, an event coming up this Saturday, uh, that this Clean City Commission hasn't been invited to, I don't know if all of you got a notice from the Diggit people or not, I'll, I'll bring it up in, under announcements, but there is a possibility that there could be a quorum at this Saturday morning.
Again, we have a blanket posting that we've done that covers the council and all of our commissions.
Okay.
Saying that quorum may be present at community events, cleanups, fairs, whatever the case may be, so again, we just ask that you as commission members, remember, you need to disperse amongst yourselves, and, uh, avoid talking about commission business. Now, if a member of the public comes up to you and wants to talk about commission business, absolutely, talk to them.
Yeah.
Because then you're doing it as an individual, they're finding out more information, that's part of your job, is to help educate.
Yeah.
It's where, hey, let's bring Mr. Russell and Ms. Cummins, and, hey, Wayne, why don't you jump in on this? That's where you start running into some of those appearance issues, and ultimately, could end up in a match.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Have you got any other questions for Sydney?
But we just ask that you guys be cognizant of that line, and just, we understand it, again, it adds a level that maybe you guys may find a little inconvenient, but the laws exist for a reason, it's so that the public can participate.
Yeah.
Anything else?
I'm good.
Okay.
I'm good.
Thank you, Sydney.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll get back to our regular schedule.
But it's, but the end of it, is there a subcommittee or not? Don't we have to come to a decision?
I suppose we, I suppose we should.
Got to get to the agenda item.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If you could give direction on whether you're going to form one, or whether to remove this from the agenda, postpone indefinitely?
What do you think, Wayne?
If you want to think about it for a month, then we'll put it on the agenda next month, and...
Are you guys okay with, like, one more meeting of this thing on there?
We can, we can do one more, yeah, because this isn't, uh, this time of the year, nothing's really going to get done anyway, so, okay?
So, if, if that's the case, if you'd like to make a motion to the table...
Make a motion on that, entertain a motion on...
I'll motion to put recycling and beautification subcommittee, table it to the next meeting, please.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Motion been made, and second, any further discussion? If not, I'll indicate, in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Okay. Thanks, Sydney.
Okay. Thanks, Sid.
Thanks.
All right. Item number three, reports, Mojave County Fair Booth, report and debrief, uh, regarding the Clean City Commission participation at the Mojave County Fair, September 13th to the 16th, 2018. Uh, I thought, under the circumstances, everything went really, really well, uh, started off, uh, Wednesday, discovering that we only had an eight-by-ten booth, and our tables absolutely would not fit. So, the, the fair people, uh, they fudged another foot for us off of the fire department, and, uh, we were able to get things in. Uh, our bags didn't show up until a little bit late, and, uh, so I made a run to Walmart and talked them into giving us a box of bags, sort of anti-productive perhaps, but we were talking about not using plastic, and here we are giving away plastic bags, but it did save our bacon for a couple of hours, at any rate, while we got rid of the, the school kids and then got their things packed. Uh, otherwise, uh, things, things went as well as can be expected, uh, with Kathy pulling out at, because of her family, uh, situation, it, it left, uh, Thursday morning a little bit bare, so, Nan and I put in a few extra hours that we hadn't intended, but other than that, and that's something we will look at as, as our, our scheduling next year. Rob?
Oh, I really didn't have anything to add, I thought, I thought it went well. Um, yeah, I mean, that's, that's a lot of material that you gave away over that weekend, $2,000 worth of materials, and...
Wow.
I don't know if, I don't know if that's, maybe we'll talk about that under the, that other agenda item on reusable bags, but I don't know if that's something you want to talk about at some point, or whether maybe limit the giveaways at the fair a little bit, so you'd have a little bit more material to hand out at other events throughout the year?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
I was, I was kind of going through what we gave away, and, and what we had left over, and, uh, about the only thing we had left over was color crayons.
Crayons.
I think some of those crayons were Eddie's, because he loaned us some at the beginning, because they kind of came in late too, so we started out with his, some crayons that he had worked with.
And, and we, we got a few from the county through a race, we got a few crayons and coloring books there. The coloring books were really, uh, that, that helped us out a lot, so, well, that's something we'll have to look at next year, maybe more, more color... a lot, so that's something we'll have to look at next year, maybe more, more coloring books than what we had before. We can get into that later.
May I say something real quick?
Sure.
Okay, so with the scheduling this time, I, I kind of looked at what happened, and you saw we had all of Thursday, and thank you so much, and thank you to your guys for coming and working, that was so cool, because I didn't know what we were gonna do about Thursday. Um, I did send out two mass emails to, um, all the commissions, but I received one response back, and I think that that probably wasn't the best way of going about it. I think next year, I'll actually, you know, go to the commission meetings and ask to either be put on the agenda to, to see if I can pass around a volunteer sheet at the meeting, and talk about, because really, it was, it was really cool, it was all of, it wasn't just Clean City Commission, it really ends up being a city booth, you know, and if maybe we can go and sort of express that, do you have any outreach you wanna do for the community, is there, even if it was one person from each commission that would come and kind of volunteer, then, you know, they could really talk about what they're doing with the people in the community, and, um, so that was one thing that I was running into a little bit of trouble with. And then I was thinking maybe even limiting the days that people sign up for. I mean, you can come and do more, but I'm only gonna schedule you for two shifts, so that if somebody has something come up, it's not five shifts we're trying to cover at the last minute. So, that was kinda my takeaway.
Yeah. Kathy Bowman went to the commissions and, uh, gave them a spiel on, on, you know, being there to, to ask, answer questions and whatnot, and apparently, they were willing to give off, give out, uh, information, giveaways, but they just didn't wanna come in person, for whatever reason, I don't know.
Oh, I appreciate that Siri was there from car...
Well, Siri was, yeah, she...
Main Keith was there from planning and zoning.
Yeah, that was really nice.
So, that was good.
Good.
It'd be nice, it would be nice to see more participation that way. Um, I was just thinking, maybe in terms of the giveaways in some way, maybe if there's some way we could get, maybe get emails or something that say, are you on the city? And then we can request them through Facebook, you know, come like our Facebook, or something like that, so that we can connect with them even more. And, uh, a lot of things were really popular, it was a good way to connect with people, and a lot of people who, who said, well, why don't, I'm from so-and-so state, why don't we have the curbside? So that gave us a chance with your folder of, you know, explaining what's going on with curbside, and what are the potentials there. And I think it's a really good way to connect. The car magnets are great. The only thing, from artistic perspective, if we could lighten the color of the green, so the green versus the black is a greater contrast, so that it shows up more and is more visible, but that's a great way to get people saying, hey, I'm participating, you know, and, and I believe we can help keep, keep them clean, even maybe better than the fridge magnets.
Uh, one thing, uh, we were sort of discussing, uh, if, if we could, if we could, before the fair, this, this year, it wouldn't have worked out, because we didn't have the bags, but if we had a, a stuffing party for the children's bags, the ones we give away to the kids, not just for Thursday, but for the whole fair, if just the items that the kids like. Uh, we were putting in, just, all of them were the same, and handing them out to the kids or adults. And, and I was walking around, uh, just kinda looking, and a lot of the material that was for the adults was in the trash can before it even got off the door, and, uh, so I think there was a lot of waste there. Uh, the kids, the kids' things, we could, we could keep in one big box and just hand those out, the coloring books and crayons, the wristbands and, and stickers and tattoos, have those all prepared and, and in a big box, and just hand them out to the kids.
Or maybe do, you know, like, some bowls, some kinda organized, so it's a little organized, but have some containers with the stuff, because even, um, I think even kids, you know, we give them the bag and they take everything, but maybe they have crayons and the parents don't want them, or maybe they have...
Reach in and grab another, yeah.
Yeah, so just take what you would like, and sometimes parents are like, just take a few, kind of a thing, you know, instead of like, I'll take this, and this, and this, and this, but people will only take really what they want, so that's not getting thrown away.
Yeah.
Maybe, possibly. I know towards the end of the night, we made bags, like, for the morning, but at the end of the night, it was mostly adults, we stopped making, like, kids' bags, or we said, oh, you can take this and this, but let's not take a bag, because that's adult stuff, you know, like, because it was just, towards the end, Saturday night, there was like maps left. We had maps and crayons, so I was like, we would just, here, have some stickers or some crayons, don't, you know, let's leave the bags for health material. Tried to stack at the end.
And I think we gave away about sixty, sixty-two, sixty-three, uh, reusable bags, Clean City reusable bags, so we still, we still have a hundred and, or two hundred and something left of those things, I think. Um, so we're in pretty good shape with bags.
I do think it is a good way to get, you know, make us more visible, and all of the commissions visible, and the community, and get to, you know, know what's going on.
Uh, the banner really helped. People would just walk by us, and with the banner up, they would look up and see what it was, and they'd actually stop and, and talk once in a while, when they saw it was a Clean City. That's when we got questions on curbside recycling and whatnot, so. Uh, and it, and it still amazes me the amount of misinformation that's out there, that they don't understand about, but, uh, but all in all, I, I thought that the, the fair went, went very well. Uh, they let us clean, they let us break down at 5:00, we didn't have to stick around till 6:00, uh, and so we were, we were done and gone by, I was home by 6:00 o'clock, I think.
Nice.
And so...
The booth looked really nice this year, too. I thought it looked really, it looked really nice, just the way everything was displayed, and the sign in the corner, it just felt really nice in there.
I, I would, I would re, did, did we have to put down a deposit on that booth?
Yeah, I'm hoping you guys didn't leave it a mess, because I...
No, we, we left... The, the one thing, I was just, I was talking with one of the vendors there, and, uh, he mentioned about the, the badges, uh, the, the fair wants those back, and, and I talked to one of the vendors, and, and he says, yeah, sometimes they don't give you your, your deposit back if you don't return the badges. So, if anyone has a badge kicking around out there, uh, let me know, and, and I'll, I'll get it all over to the fairgrounds Monday morning. So, anything else? Anybody else got anything on the...
I'd like to apologize for not being able to pull the second shift I had signed up for, because I was really sick, and all I did was sleep and slept for the next thirty-six hours of that weekend, so I didn't have a good time, I would've had much more fun at the, at the, uh, fair, so I apologize for that, but I couldn't help it.
It would've been typhoid, Wayne.
No.
Uh, did anybody have any problems getting in and out, as far as having a badge to park and, and get in the gate?
Get in the gate, not, I had one of the security guards who followed me all the way to the booth, practically, because I didn't have a, I'm like, I'm with the Clean City Commission, it's at the booth, trust me, I'm not going anywhere else until later. Yeah, and he followed me pretty much most of the way to the booth, it's like, really? Okay, whatever.
Meanwhile, everybody slipped in the door, yeah!
So that's, that's something we'll have to...
So I don't know if there's some way to have maybe a sign at, not just the vendor badge, but maybe a list at the door that says who it is, and you show your ID. Yes, I'm on the list, let me in, my vendor badge is in there.
Either that, or Wednesday before the fair, we'll see about getting the badges out to the, to the people.
And they only have enough for us before, to exchange and trade at the gate.
That was, this, this year was pretty good. They, I, I went back and they gave me a handful, I, I can't remember how many it was, but I got a, I got, uh, six or eight extra badges, and, uh, that worked out well, because I was able to get them down to you, and, and then have, still have the badges for everybody else, so.
Parking was easy. It was like, I'm a vendor, okay.
The night shift, it would've been faster, faster, quicker on the street.
So that's something we'll take a look at next year, I think, as far as...
It took about thirty minutes to get out of the parking lot on Saturday night, it was bumper to bumper. That's okay now.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. Uh, item B is Day of Caring Citywide Cleanup. Uh, Day of Caring Citywide Cleanup Report. Uh, again, everything, considering that Maria Gonzalez, it was her first time putting it together, and she had limited knowledge of how to, how to do it, and fortunately, Joni Millen stepped in and showed her how to use the computer to make the thing work properly, and she got it all together, and it went, it went really well. Uh, I wanna thank Commissioner Jordan for, for stepping up and, and, uh, coming in and, and early in the morning, and taking care of the signups and handing out the bags. Uh, Eddie's crew, man, we put those bags out, and I no sooner turn around and they were gone. Yeah, he must've made three trips down just to that one spot, so I don't know how many trips he made all through the, all through town, but it was picked up and gone quick. Uh, and of course, Rob's crew mowing down the, the grass there in between Fly and Jay and Bash's, what a difference that made. But, uh, we had plenty of bags, we had apparently enough people, the town looked pretty good afterwards. Jordan, anything to add to it?
I would say that good job to the city. The number-one compliment I guess we got is pretty much everyone that came back said, wow, this year was really easy, because it was already pretty clean. We had a lot of, people were done, most groups were done by 9:30, because the streets were already pretty clean, so they were like, really happy, and gave a lot of kudos to the city, so, thank you.
That's, uh, very good.
Eddie, just give me some numbers, you know, he had run a $3 special for two weeks?
Yeah, we advertised it for two weeks, it took a fair week. Some people called in, like, because it ended on the 14th, but they called in on the 12th, saying, hey, I'd like to pick up on the maintenance, really were three weeks picking it all up.
Yeah, so we had made, we had carried out 242 work orders for 67.7 tons worth of trash.
Wow.
Picked up in a three-week period.
Wow, fantastic.
Amazing.
But sort of...
Now, is the $3 pickup over with now?
Done, and it starts again for the whole month.
October, super.
Wow.
Good. Okay. Anything, anything else? All right, let's move along to old business, uh, recycling and beautification committees. Well, we've kinda covered that, unless there's anything else we need to talk about on that, I don't think so. We can, anybody have anything on that to discuss? Okay, let's go on to B, uh, promoting community involvement. Further discussion on the possible action regarding the promotion, or promoting of community involvement in the area of cleanup and recycling.
I got something to say on that. Um, if you look out into the auditorium here, we have nobody. It would be nice if we had community members to come tell us what they would like to see, instead of what we think they want to do, and that would also give them the opportunity to say, hey, I'll help with that, or whatever. So, that would be the first thing I'd like to see, is to attempt, and I know it's, it's difficult, I go to the county meetings all the time, and there's 200,000 people, and you get 20 people at the meeting, you get more staff members than, than other things, unless something exciting's going on, and then you get a bunch of people. So, I, I know that's difficult, so, but I would like to work on their ideas, and I got lots of ideas, but trying to get them to do it, I would, I would rather them tell us what they want, and then we can work on that, and that would be better than us guessing what they would like to do.
We could stage a mud wrestling event, say, Clean City's putting on a mud wrestling, come see, right here, on Thursday nights.
Uh, you know, the, the city, the, the Daily Miner has been, uh, printing our agenda every, before our meetings, and I, if they would just add, uh, public input is desired, uh, we might get some people in here. We might, we might talk to the Daily Miner about just adding one little sentence to that, saying, the, the public is, is...
Then I think if we did a public service announcement on the radio and stuff, also prior, you know, a week prior to the meeting, or something like that, and, and have that run to promote having the meeting and stuff like that, and also on, obviously, on our Facebook page, and then we can go and, and share that with the people that we know that... So, those things, like I say, that's, that's what I would like to see, is more participation in, in community involvement, because I think, they're the ones that's gotta do the work, we can't, I mean, we can go, I can go out there and pick up a lot of trash, but if there were fifty of us out there, it'd be a lot better, so...
Exactly.
If we can get community involved, then that's...
And, and there's where we can, we can start developing a volunteer bank for various cleanups and, and projects that we may wanna take on.
What about your idea, where you were talking about the, um, it was on your...
Talked about it a little bit, of the last, last meeting, about how to do, just to improve their yards, or to get people, like, positive reinforcement, of telling them, oh, this house cleaned up, good job. I don't know how to even go about that, though, about having a neighbor nominate, like, someone that cleaned up their house, or to give kudos to, how, on Facebook, or the... Flyer, kinda talked about it at last.
That little flyer that, that you made up, uh, we gave them away at the dedication of the, the arch, and we had a stack of them down at the, at the fair. Uh, on the back, it showed where the, the drop, recycled drop bins were, but on the front, it was, I could say, easy recycling, or something like that, and there was a, a whole thing on, on recycling. Uh, is, is there, is there any way that something like that could, could put into a mailer and go out with a bill, or get to everybody that has a, a garbage pickup in the city, so that they get a little more information on recycling? Uh, some of the questions we were getting were just totally, like, they were from outer space, they had no idea, uh, why we did what we did, as far as even, you know, cleaning dog food cans, why, why it's important that they are clean, rather than just put in filthy, dirty the way they are. So, uh, I, I think something like that may be a real eye-opener for the people, I don't know.
I mean, we do, we do certain mailers every year, most of them have to do with the holiday schedule, and how that affects service. Um, it's pretty expensive for us to mail things out in the water bill. Um, but, you know, we have before.
Okay.
You know, it's something that might be related, I think, the city manager's looking at doing a citywide survey, um, what that'll look like, I don't know. That would be a kind of a combination of a scientifically selected random sample of people would get to survey in the mail, but I think it would also be available on our website for people to go fill out. Uh, my understanding is, is they'll have questions about, you know, what services the city provides, how they would rank those services, prioritize them. So I don't know if that figure into this discussion at all, but, uh, I guess as far as recycling education, with, with us having the rate study pending, or coming up here hopefully shortly, and the, the fact that that may dictate changes to, uh, recycling, whether that would be just going back to the drop program, or citywide curbside, or possibly even, I guess, none, you know, I don't know about spending a significant, significant amount of money telling people how to utilize our current program, if our program's gonna change.
So, oh, sorry, I was just gonna say, honestly, as Clean City, to do it digitally through the Facebook and stuff like that, might be our best bet to save paper and everything.
That on the, and also on the city website, and, uh, like, I, I, we're, we're still a little bit behind, I think, uh, the power curve on, on the internet, and the quality of the internet and stuff like that, but there's, there... and the quality of the internet and stuff like that, but there's, there is a tremendous amount of people who use social media and websites, and I know if you've got a business, if you don't have a website, you're kind of not getting out there as well. So if we could have something on the city website that has, that would refer, or in any other advertising that you do, you want to refer them to that website so they can check it out, and that way you don't have to send them a flyer and all that stuff, because there's...
That would be a lot more cost-effective, yeah.
Right. So if we can drive all the information to the city website and stuff, that would be, I think, more cost-effective and have more impact than trying to send out flyers and cost a lot of money and stuff, so...
The other resource that the city has is a YouTube channel, so with the new public affairs person that's been hired, they're working on producing some short videos for the YouTube channel, that could be, you know, links to that could be on Facebook or on the website. So I think as that goes on, of course, you know, that person has a long list of, you know, there's a lot of important things coming up in November that we need to try to get information out about, but, you know, after that, I think that might be an avenue, too, that we could possibly produce a video detailing best practices for what's the best way to recycle.
That's good.
And talk about that cleanliness and contamination, but that would probably be something that would be a few months down the road.
So we, do you remember when we did those certificates that we were, each meeting we were nominating a business for, so would if, like Jordan's ideas, to have people in the community nominate a neighbor, kind of thing? And I don't know, we'd have to really plan how that would work, but it could maybe even be, I don't know, we'd have to kind of think about how that nomination process. Like, remember when we named the mascot guy?
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah. We had a contest, yeah.
And we had the community kind of get involved and name it. I feel like people got really excited about that, so maybe if we did, like, nominate your neighbor, but then also nominated a business, and maybe at a meeting we could pick, you know, the person, and just do a printed certificate and present it to them at a meeting, you know, just to kind of, and then whenever we have those where we're doing award or certificate kind of things, really, they bring their whole family, and it's like, kind of nice to have people out there.
I guess, too, as a city, we can't go into their yard, so some way to incentivize them to do it themselves.
Exactly.
Which is, so, I saw at the fair, and I'm glad we had the little postcards that said what to say, like, which number to call and who to connect with when you have, like, illegal dumping or reporting your yard, or different things like that, because I had some people ask, what do I say about my neighbors, because my property value's going down, because I have, two of my neighbors are crappy-looking yards, and I'm like, and check out this number, too, you know, and check this out. Because there's also the flip side of, like, how do I get it taken care of? Just letting them know.
A lot of people are afraid to do anything for fear that the neighbor will take restitution, yeah.
Maybe if it starts a whole, the ball-rolling of incentivizing it and seeing, well, these people, you know, got recognized, hey, maybe next month I can, if I do it.
Going along with what Sarah was saying, I was approached by Nina that handled the essay contest last year, as to whether we were going to do it again this year or not. Essay poster contest for the, what's up to 7th grade, I think it is, and then we've done it every year now for the last four years that I know of, and I don't know if they were doing it before that or not, but that's a good involvement, that you get the kids, and then the parents get involved in trying to write the essay. It sounds like the child wrote it.
Well, I can contact her, follow up on that.
Okay.
Is that, does that seem like too much, I mean, does that seem possible for a commission to do, create some kind of a, you know, nominate your neighbor, like, does that just sound like a nightmare, or what do you think?
I think we'd have to be careful.
Do you think it's more...
As Mary Ann stated, I mean, if the city's hanging around somebody's house, taking pictures of their house, and, you know, with kind of with some of my background in code enforcement, sometimes that doesn't, it's not always a pleasant experience. But, it's a possibility, I mean...
Do you think if you just do it yourself, because if they, like, shared their own picture on our Facebook page, and then we picked which one we, like, the city got to vote, or the community got to vote on their favorite, or...
What if you did, like, stewards of the, instead of, like, so stick with the business one, where we're doing, like, oh, this business really cleaned up their facade and all that, but then we did, like, nominate stewards of the community, like, people that know that they go out every day and pick up trash, and they, you know, what if, what if you nominated somebody and they wrote a little thing about, you know, this person goes out and does all this stuff, and I nominate them, kind of thing?
Well, I think it's something that, you know, that we could research.
Yeah.
Because it does sound, I'm sure there are some similar types of programs.
Yeah.
I guess I'd just like a little background on how they function.
And rewards always have.
See, there's one going on somewhere.
You give a little reward, even if it's a $10 gift certificate, rather than, I think we were given, I don't know what we were giving the kids for their essays, but they all got rewards for that.
And even just recognition, you know, I think, we, when people volunteer, and they volunteer all the time, just even to just be recognized, I think, means a whole lot to them, because I don't think they're doing it for the money, or...
I mean, if the businesses were just a little, little piece of paper that said that they were recognized as, Gersh, Rutherford's, they had, they're sitting on the counter for months, I don't know what they've done with them, now the counter space ran out, but they sat there for months.
You know, if we can find out, you know, like, me, for instance, I go for a walk in the morning and collect trash as we're walking, but if we have people within the city that does that, and we can find out and promote that within their, within the city, stuff either on our website or the city website, that they're out there doing this and taking pride in their community and stuff like that, and, because I find out with that, again, they're small numbers, but then there's small numbers in Kingman, there's small numbers in Golden Valley, and there's small numbers, actually, in California that have taken up, doing some of that, too, so it's, it's slow and small, but if you don't start somewhere, you don't have nothing.
First step, that's it.
So if we can get that out and get, find the people who's doing that, and let everybody else know that, hey, grab a bag, take a hike, you know, and you don't have to pick up everything, but if you pick up something that's more than what was happening before you grabbed that bag and took a walk. We walk for an hour and a half sometimes, but you might only have, most people only have to work five minutes and they can fill up a bag, so, you know, just something to show some recognition, so other people will say, hey, that's a good idea, and let's do that, too, you know, not that they do it every day, but once a week, once a month even, it is better than none.
Could we maybe look at other communities and see if any of the cities or Clean City Commissions, or Keep America Beautiful, or any of those organizations, maybe do some type of a program like that, where they recognize people in a community and just kind of model, see if there's a model out there that we can kind of look at?
Yeah, I can, I can do some research and bring it back next month.
I mean, we can research it and come back next month and talk about it. I know you guys are so swamped, but we won't talk about it.
Yeah, like, we each research a program and then kind of report on what we found at the next meeting.
True.
Okay.
Takes a motion. We retable this until...
I make a motion. I make a motion to research and then report back next meeting? Put it on the agenda? I don't know.
Yeah, just continue this item till the next meeting.
Do what?
Continue this item till the next meeting.
Continue this item? This item, until the next meeting?
I second that.
Okay.
Motion's been made and seconded, that we table this until next month. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. All right. Item C, reusable bag distribution. Further discussion and possible action regarding how and where the CCC gives out reusable bags. This was something I brought up at the last meeting, I think it was, regarding our grocery store giveaways, trying to find a better venue where the people aren't just grab-and-go kind of thing. And I had mentioned the, a couple of times, maybe, maybe three to four times a year at the First Friday, but then I didn't, I haven't had a chance to look into that, to see, is there a cost to have a booth down at First Friday, on the street?
There is a cost, it's, I'll have to find out for sure, I think it's $20 to do it, but...
Twenty-five if we have a business license or insurance.
If you're a nonprofit organization such as we are...
So it's twenty-five.
It's twenty-five.
Just because there's, like, myself and a couple other people that pay to have this event, so we'd love to let everybody have it for free, but when just a few people are paying for it, like, everybody kind of needs to pitch in a little bit. But we have decided to waive any fees if the nonprofit wants to do some type of an activity to contribute to the event, you know, rather than just kind of self-promotion, but to do some sort of activity that's related. So that's kind of how we've found a way of, like, because there are nonprofits that are, you know, might not necessarily have the money, but would like to, you know, help to...
Even if the mascot came out and entertained the kids, that would qualify.
That's what I was thinking, mascot in the cooler line.
So if you brought the mascot, the fee would probably be able to be waived.
How about that?
Hey!
We'll talk to the organizers.
I'll wear the mascot if someone will help me.
It's easy to get in and out of, I'll put out in that right now. I think we would probably need a whole relay of people to wear the mascot in certain months of the year. The day that I put it on during the, and that was late in the afternoon, it was fairly cool, at the dedication to the arch, I could wear it maybe 10 minutes, and it was hot under that thing. And all I had was the gloves and filled the bin on. I didn't, I didn't have the, there's a whole suit that goes with that, if you weren't aware of it, there's a, it's like felt, and during the wintertime, it would be wonderful, but, oh, man, it would be irregular, weight-reducing up. Hello, I lost everything again.
I wonder if there's some way, I think that there's some way that we could kind of, I mean, even if, as the Clean City Commission, we volunteered to help clean up after the event, you know, or something like that, because, I mean, that's what we do, is we have a trash bag and we just go around and pick up everything we can find, we take off the top of the trash of all the trash cans, so it's not overflowing by the time you guys get to it. So I think even if people are willing to, you know, volunteer to clean up after, or something, then we could...
It's not that one, is it?
Just defeat people.
Anybody have any idea what you're feeling about sticking with the grocery stores, or how do you feel about this, you know, that was just an idea of mine, I don't know whether you want to stick with the grocery stores, and/or do something like where we'd be in a booth and waiting for people to come to us?
At least with the grocery store, even though it's grab-and-go, at least you know they're using it right away that first time.
This is true.
And hopefully, we've got a neuron established that you're supposed to walk in with.
This is true.
I was shocked at the grocery store, though, how many people just flat-out refused.
Close your mind, don't it?
I was very surprised handing out.
I think it would be helpful to have something like at First Friday where we could, you can talk to people, just kind of like at the fair, but, I mean, I really loved when the whole sanitation and the planning and, when you guys had your whole setup there, I thought that was really cool, you know, and it was neat to have the different city people there, too, like, I don't know, I thought that was really cool.
If we could work out to get it for free, I think there'd be really no harm in trying First Friday.
We have First Friday, so if we do, it's coming right up, you know, and this, this theme is the October Harvest Festival, and I think this one's going to be a good one, and we're inviting Dig It Community Gardens and, you know, different groups like that. I think really the idea is anybody who does anything for the community to be able to come and just share with the community what they're doing, so...
We could even plan it for November. Just chocolate. Day of the Dead. So we would have to get volunteers to do that booth, because I know I would not be able to at First Fridays.
Yeah, it would only, it would only take a couple people. And how many hours does that entail?
Um, I think in six to nine, six to ten.
So we're looking at three hours, something like that, yeah. All right. This screen went out all of a sudden.
We could try it if you guys are interested in maybe, like, trying it this month, and...
This month might, is it June?
Yeah, this month, this month is, I won't be in town this month, if anyone else... Does, do we have an easier?
Yes.
We do, okay. So...
I don't know how much staff support would be.
We may, we may be a little too soon for this month to get everything all set up. We do have, we do have the bags we can give away, that's not a problem. Anything else would be disinformation material on recycling.
I mean, if we wanted to wait until next meeting, and just maybe everyone can think about what the purpose of having it would be, like, what we would have at the booth, and what, you know, and then make a decision, because it'd be before the next First Friday.
And then we can get volunteers lined up, and we could also see if they're willing to do it for free for us.
Yeah.
And we will supply, fill the bin.
Well, and it might be good to see if we all wore our Clean City Commission shirts, cleaning up after an event like that. I think just people notice that stuff, you know, like, oh, they're out there, they're a commission, they're part of this community event, because, I mean, we've been getting, like, we've had an event where there was, like, 1,000 people, you know, so a lot of people from the community come out for it.
Because if we discussed it at the next meeting, it would still be two weeks until the First Friday.
Entertaining motion?
I'm doing it. I motion that we table this until the next meeting and bring it, bring up the possibility of doing First Fridays at the next meeting.
I hear a second?
Second that.
Motion made and seconded, that we table this item until next month. Any further discussion? There's no further discussion? I'm saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, being my screen went out, we have announcements by the commissioners. Now, there we go. Yeah. Limited to announcements, availability, attendance in, at conferences, seminars, requests for agenda items for further meetings. Commissioner Holland?
I have nothing.
Commissioner...
I have nothing.
Shafary?
I think I've said enough tonight, thanks.
I have nothing.
Okay, I do have one thing. I got, I got an email from Denise with the Dig It, Kingman Dig It, I'll just read this rather than trying to paraphrase it, it just says, hello, Clean City Commission, you are invited to our dedication day, Saturday, September 22nd, at 10:00 a.m. at the Dig It... Community Gardens. I hope you'll be able to attend," and there was a flyer attached. "We are so very grateful for your, your support at the garden and want to show our appreciation." So anyone that wants to attend this day of dedication, you all know where the Diggit Gardens are down there, it'll be at 10, 10:00 a.m. this Saturday morning. Other than that, let's see, that's about it. Entertaining motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting closed.
Adam, were you the second?
Yes.
Were you the second?
Yes.
Okay. They got to turn this off. Hey, how you doing?